Thirty, meeting will come to order. Town of Lee, right to know law meeting checklist as chairman of the select board due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis. In accordance with Governor Sunnu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to an executive order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location observed and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which is authorized pursuant to Governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting, while members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone: 1-646-5886, and entering meeting ID 85129916736, and password 124855, by entering the same information through zoom.us. B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided on the Town of Lee's website at leenewhampshire.org. C) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-659-5414. D) Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we are adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled to another time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance when each member states their presence. Also, please state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. I pass the gavel to the Chairman of ABC.
Okay, roll call vote. Julie Glover.
Present and alone.
Carrie Brown.
Present and alone.
Scott Bugbee.
I'm here, I'm the only one to hear.
John LaChorus.
Present and alone.
Pat Barber.
Present and alone.
Steve Ballack.
Present and alone.
Stacy Waits.
Present and alone.
Rebecca Hawthorne.
Present and alone.
Present and with... ...the baby!
What's the baby's name?
Madeline.
Alright.
Present and with Madeline. Tom Murdock, present and alone. I guess we don't have Cord. Alright. We can start the meeting. Steve! You're all set.
You just gained Cord, by the way.
We did?
Yeah.
I don't see him!
That's right, I can see him, he's here.
Oh, okay. Cord Blumquist! Ah, there he is! Sorry!
Present and alone.
Expanding problems.
What's the baby's name? I don't understand.
Well, he's a dual personality.
He's got that each week, he signs on with it, but...
Everybody wants to be me!
Alright, Steve, I guess now we're ready.
Alright. So the highway budget, I didn't raise at all. I kept it flat. I just moved money around within the budget. So miscellaneous engineering, I just dropped 500 bucks. Same with the police details, and then I added it in on the parks and grounds maintenance, and on the building M&amp;R. The parks and grounds, we've started doing a lot more down there this year, and the park's gotten a lot of heavy use in the last six months. And we've been spending a lot of time down there mowing, picking up a lot of trash. We made the two pickleball courts earlier this year. And just general maintenance, we had one of the frogs break and snap off. You know, that should be coming out of the rent commission's budget, but we've got to paint the pavilion next year, Thompson's water seal it, replace a bunch of picnic tables that are starting to rot. So I increased that budget by 500 bucks so we could accomplish that. The building M&amp;R, the front shop where I'm at now, we got approved at the end of this past fiscal year for new windows and a door. The back shop needs new weather stripping, put around all the garage doors, and we need to replace a bunch of the lights. Switch them over to LEDs so we can try to save a little bit of energy cost. And then diesel, I reduced by $750 and just added on to the new equipment, because we've been buying a bunch of newer equipment and replacing some of the stuff that's got a lot of miles put on it. And that was pretty much it with the highway budget. I just, I kept it flat, that's what the directive that we were given was, so that's what I tried to do.
Steve, if I can, there was some discussion, I think, not that long ago, about buying a turbine leaf blower?
Yeah.
And do you have that in the budget now for next year?
Well, we were trying to save all throughout last year to buy one, and we would have been able to do it, but then COVID hit and we were put on the don't, you didn't want us to spend, so we didn't. And then, right at the end, we figured out we were okay, and by that point it was too late to try to go out to bid for it, because it would have been probably around $10,000, so it would have been an item that needed to be put out to bid.
But we, but we need it, right?
It works well. We borrowed last year the one from the racetrack just to try, because we wanted to see if it would work, and we put it on the forks of the loader and drove around and blew all the ditch lines out from all the leaves, especially on the dirt roads, and it saved us from having the leaves and then the sand going over the top of it, so we didn't fill the ditch lines in. The water was able to run off the road, it worked out well.
Is it in the CIP?
No, I have that meeting tomorrow night.
Shouldn't it be?
I mean, it can be. We were just trying to do it without putting it in, because once we buy it, we shouldn't ever have to replace it.
How much is it?
It depends on how, which one we buy. There's ones that mount to the front of a skid steer. There's other ones that get trailered on wheels behind you. There's other ones you can just get a skid and you can mount on a trailer and tow around. So it depends on the, on the package you decide to go with.
Is there a range? Like, I have no idea how...
Like, 8,500 to probably 11,000.
Okay.
Well, I would suggest you, when you speak of them tomorrow, at least put it on the list.
Yeah.
Yep.
Steve, can you speak to, like, one of the things you and I spoke about already is in terms of the winters we've been having. In this particular budget, are you planning on a regular snowy winter, or what are you planning on?
I always plan on a snowy winter, and we just haven't gotten them two years in a row. Last year was especially bad. It started off good, and it ended with a dud, which is why the salt budget was so low, and we did a good job, because we didn't have to do anything. It's why diesel fuel, we didn't spend a lot out of the diesel fuel budget, because there was, we weren't beating the pavement all winter long. We didn't have to. Which is the other reason why the cutting edge budget was so low, because we didn't have to replace the cutting edges on the plows.
So Steve, you don't foresee any issues with the salt supply, so on?
No, the bid came back at $46.75 a ton, which is what it was last year, so it didn't go up, it stayed the same.
Good, okay. Can you speak to us about your paving plan for this next year? And what is asphalt? Is asphalt going up, down? What is it doing now?
The past two years for us, it's stayed the same, it hasn't moved. This year's paving budget came back, or the bids came back at $191,000 is what the bid came back for, for those. And I'd expect next year it comes back that or a little bit above. I don't need to increase the budget for it.
Can you run down, can you run down what roads and things you're doing in that plan?
So we flip-flopped them. The roads we did this year, we were supposed to do next year, but Stepping Stones Road was worse. So the next year's roads are Hobbs, Bell Sawyer, Captain Parker, and there's one other road. Can't remember it off the top of my head. Riverside Farm Drive in Wheelwright Pond.
Oh, that's a lot! So, so Steve, we've been, we've been talking about the outside work. What about the transfer station? What about, do we need any capital equipment there?
Not as of right now. Everything is in the CIP, I think we're doing okay in there.
Okay.
The only thing I was gonna do is, between having two departments, we have four skid steers, and we really don't need four skid steers between four departments. Get away with sharing one, we don't need to have three.
That's the conversation we'll have with the CIP people tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to do the transfer station budget?
So this budget, I was able to reduce mileage. We haven't really used any. And we reduced it last year, so I reduced it again. Postage was the same thing. And then the transfer station equipment, or the transfer station other, I didn't use any of it hardly. And then the kitchen expense, I'm not going to the store and buying coffee creamer, and everything else, like, was being done before. If they want that, they can bring it in themselves, so I need, I could reduce that. So essentially, that $250 is to buy water and paper towels and stuff like that for the guys to have.
And the volunteer tanks?
I've never used that at all. Last year, I thought I reduced it to zero. Or I just haven't used it, so I don't...
Okay.
And it hasn't, it's going back, as far as I can tell, it's never been used.
Okay. Steve, could you talk a little bit about how you're doing on sell and recycle?
Yeah. Can I get through the rest of that budget? And then I'll talk about it?
Yep.
So, because I want to, the guys, we did a, they did a really good job in there this year. If you look at the electricity, we were way under on electricity this year, and that's because we fixed all the heaters and all the pieces of equipment, and we put timers on them, so they only run the days the transfer stations open, instead of 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So at the beginning of the winter, we hadn't had them on yet. We didn't get the timers on yet, and the electricity bill for that month was $1,000. Once we got the timers up and running on all the heaters, we reduced the electricity bill after that to 600, so we saved $400 a month just by putting the heaters in. We started shopping around a lot more on the equipment maintenance line, and we were able to change all the oil and all the pieces of equipment, buy all that new stuff, and still maintain the equipment the way it needed to be. And we came in under budget with that, so we did a lot better. And things still broke a lot and all the time, but buying it from state contracts in places where we get a discount instead of the not places like that, we were able to save a fair amount of money. And then the rest of it, I left the same. And then your question on recycling, we're able to market the stuff extremely well still right now. For instance, as of right now, this year we've bailed more tin, or more aluminum cans than we did all of last year. The price isn't very good, but we've still bailed more tin, more aluminum this year than we did the entirety of last year. And then on cardboard, we are ahead by about a month and a half on the amount of cardboard we've recycled compared to this point last year. The markets aren't very good at all. The prices for aluminum cans bailed is 29 cents a pound, which is about 30 cents a pound less than it normally is. Bale tin cans are only down, or $50 a gross ton. Normally, they're like $220 a gross ton, so we're not making the money off the recycling that we should, but it's still better than putting it in the landfill and paying to get rid of it.
Steve, in terms of, is it, do you have any indication from the NRRA that this is because of COVID? Or is it just, just the economy is just doing it? In terms of, that's the natural progression in terms of recyclables going up and down and all over the place? Did they give you any indication if COVID starts to go away, or they get it under control, that these prices will go back up?
Well, so, at the beginning of COVID, cardboard was through the roof, and we were getting paid $160 a ton for cardboard, but it's dropped all the way back down to 55, because they had that first initial rush of everyone going to the store, and they didn't have any cardboard, so they needed the cardboard to be able to pack food and stuff in it. So, and the prices have gone up. Plastics gone up in the last month, three to five cents a pound. Newspaper, at the beginning of COVID, was 35 cents a pound, or $35 a ton, sorry. Newspaper now is $145 a ton, so I mean, some of it is going up, some of it staying the same, others... I don't see it going any lower than it is.
Yep. So Steve, I'm sorry, go ahead, Steve.
It can only go up from here, I hope.
So Steve, how is our composting program going? That was gonna be my question, too.
We ship on average of 14 bins a month, so some weeks we ship two, some weeks we ship three. We've had a couple weeks where we've shipped four. We average like 400 pounds per container. So we're doing pretty good, and it's $14 a container to pick it up. And all that cost is going, I just pay that out of the MSW line, out of the budget. But I think it's working well.
And it's saving us money? Do you, I'm sorry, Scott. No, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't think it's...
Do you have a feel for the participation rate relative to, you know, how many people we got doing composting?
Probably almost 200, I think.
Is it saving us money, Steve, or is it costing us or breaking even? What's happening?
I think if I didn't buy the bags for people, we'd be staying right the same.
Okay, alright.
I found a new place to buy bags that is two cents cheaper per bag, so we're saving a little bit there.
Okay.
But everyone likes doing it.
Good work, dude!
And, I mean, and Scott, with the increase that's coming in January?
Yep.
And then the increase that's gonna come the following January, even with buying the bags, we'll be saving money. I think once we get to the, for sure, once we get to the January of the budget we're talking about now.
Yeah, do you want to fill the ABC on what, what you're talking about there? Some of the members are new and they don't know, and maybe some of the older members need a refresher.
We have a contract with Lamprey Regional Cooperative through Turnkey, or to get rid of our MSW at the Turnkey landfill in Rochester. Right now, we pay $67 a ton. January 1st, we'll start paying $68.50. The year after that, I believe it's $69.50 or $70, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah.
So it goes up, it's a fixed increase every single year on January. I believe it was a 10-year contract, and then they have to renegotiate for rates again.
And also, in terms of people that are negotiating with Waste Management right now, they're talking about in the 90s per ton? So we're getting quite the discount compared to other people, so we should enjoy it.
That we are.
Do you want to talk about hauling costs, Steve?
Yeah, so our hauling costs, on your screen it says $3,400, and actually, this has happened in the last few weeks. It's gonna have to be an increase of $3,800, because I got an email the other day from the NRRA that our hauling costs that we pay to ship our scrap metal bins is going up, $40 a haul. So we average about 12 a year, give or take. So that needs to be increased by the 400. And then the halfway through this fiscal year we're talking about now, so January, once January 1st comes, we no longer have a hauling contract that we have now. So half of this budget is figured in at our hauling costs at our current rate we're paying now with Shipyard. The second half of the year, which is that $3,400, is the hauling costs at $300 a haul instead of 238. And the reason I chose that number is, if you look at the bids that came back from the contract we have now, in the third year of the contract, every other person that bid was $325 to $350 a haul, because they all increased it by 3% every year, where Shipyard didn't, they just kept it flat. And the reason I think it's going up is Shipyard is not owned by the same people that it was when we have the contract we have now. A company called Wheelabrator bought them, and Wheelabrator is along the same lines as Waste Management, where they're, they, they're more expensive with everything they do.
Steve, if you don't mind me asking a question. So I guess that's the hauling, and that's just literally to transport it? And we also have to pay an additional fee in order to actually dispose of it once it gets to its final destination?
Yes, that's the top ones, that's the solid waste disposal MSW fee.
Okay, so two separate fees for technically two separate services with different vendors?
Yes.
Okay. And Julie, maybe I have a question for you, but I'm wondering, for the employees, the full-time employees here, I'm assuming they receive benefits, but I don't see a benefit line item in the transfer station or the highway budgets.
Right, we, we bind all of the benefit costs together, and they're in the personnel budget.
Okay, so we, so we don't have a clear view into, you know, the benefit costs associated with only the highway personnel or only the transfer station personnel?
Correct.
Is there a reason that we do it that way, or?
Well, we kind of do that out of an abundance of caution, because so many of the departments are so small that if you put the health insurance costs in those budgets, you could maybe identify who has what plan, and it just takes a very broad view of privacy for the employees.
Okay.
But since we can, you know, we can tell you what the cost is for one person and a two-person and a family plan, which we will do when we do the selectmen's budget.
Okay.
We go over that pretty extensively.
Steve, you want to talk to us about possibly doing our own trucking?
Yeah, so we've talked about that in the past. And depending on what those rates come back at for shipping, if it starts getting up into the $40,000, $45,000 range, which if they increase everything at the end of the three years, you could be looking at almost $400 a haul by the end of it. We could be there, and at that point, it may be cheaper to put in the CIP to buy a roll-off truck and haul it ourselves. The only issue with that is the highway department is currently the only ones with CDLs, and we have a hard enough time with the three of us to get done everything we need to get done to be able to start hauling trash. You may have to start thinking about adding another person, if that's what's gonna happen, which would be split between the two. They'd work at the highway department, plow snow, which would make it so I don't have to have as big of a part-timer budget, because I got another full-timer plowing snow, and then they'd be hauling the trash and the C&amp;D. And in that case, I could get rid of the hauling for the metal, because we could haul our own metal to Hardings or Schnitzer instead of paying the $220 that we pay the NRRA now to haul it.
Just remember that the new employee that he's, like, he's talking about, just ballpark, is gonna cost somewhere around $80,000 or $90,000 a year.
For a full-time employee?
Yeah, it could be less than that. But, you know, 40, let's just say 40,000 or 45,000 is in the salary, and then by the time you add in all the benefits, it's not unusual to double that.
I think that's something that Steve can keep us updated on in terms of what those prices are?
Yep.
Yeah, we're gonna have to put a bid out as soon, I'm hoping to put one out as fast as we can after the first of the year to try to figure it out. Because if we need to think about a truck and struggle for a little while, getting everything done and getting the trash hauled with the people I got, then it is what it is. But I just don't know what those numbers are gonna be. They may all come back at $400 now, I don't know. Just don't know what the market's gonna bear for it.
And as usual, the Lamprey closure cost, when we have our meeting, I think it's next month, and then we vote on it in January, we'll know exactly what that number is. It should be around what that is. The other thing that they, we've talked, I've talked to the board about, and also in terms of Steve, is the Lamprey Regional Co-op has two funds. One is a closure fund for the landfill that we use in Summersworth. The other one is an operating account. The operating account has a little over $200,000 in it. Since all the billing now comes through each of the towns and not through the cooperative, the executive board has talked about liquidating that. And also, in terms of the closure account, there's no reason that we should have over $300,000. So the executive board is gonna recommend to the membership that those get reduced. I've talked to the board about it, and they kind of agreed that we should ask for a checkback, so that money should come back to us at some point. So just, that's more of an FYI, it hasn't happened yet, we haven't talked about it, but that's where kind of the executive board is leaning, so.
Steve, it looks like we haven't used a lot of our training dollars. Is there a particular reason for that?
We normally do, but COVID hit, and we can't send anyone to training, and they did a whole bunch of free webinars on the, online, so they've just been watching the stuff they need for their continuing education credits on the internet, and going to the NRRA meetings online in order to get their credits they need.
I guess what about in 2019? We didn't really use a whole lot of our budget there either. So I guess what was the circumstance in that year?
I can't really speak to that. I wasn't in charge of the transfer station for that whole entire...
Okay.
Time.
But are people are staying current on their training requirements?
They have to be, or they'll get fined by DES.
Okay.
They're all staying current. We also don't have as many part-timers in there as they had before, where we've shrunk it a little bit.
Steve, can you speak to the fire suppression system? Has that been fixed yet, or have they done the testing yet on the tank and the lines and stuff yet?
No, they haven't done the, the... No, they haven't done the, the tank. We haven't drained it and they haven't dove on it, um, yet. The fire suppression system breaks on them on a bi monthly basis in there and gets weeks that we have to have people come fix the alarm systems. I've had people in there just to work on the fire alarm itself, not the sprinkler system. Uh, fought four or five times in the last three months because it keeps going off and sending tones out. So the building, the, the fire suppression system has been causing me problems.
Does it need some attention?
Some leaks and fixing them as they pop up.
Oh, does it need some attention? That building is what seventeen years old? No, less than that. Sixteen years old?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we've, we've replaced at least two whole runs on the main lines since I've been in there trying to save them. We've replaced the downspouts. The pump test is still good. The, the pump's fine. It's just the, the iron pipes are, uh, starting to spring air leaks in them.
Okay. Is there anything capital we have to plan on in the near future?
No, I, as long as the leaks stay small and we keep being able to maintain the leaks and, and if I stand on top of them and fix them as they pop up.
Okay.
Then we should be good. The, the system itself hasn't had a leak in it for like ten months. It's been the actual alarm panel itself that's been causing me problems now.
Fair enough.
Does that fall into the equipment M and R budget?
That's what I've been paying with it, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Didn't we ask the trustees of the trust if we could use the money in the transfer station equipment fund and the answer was no?
Yeah, and then we also asked if we could do it out of the highway system fund and they said no too.
So, so Steve, uh, looking towards, looking towards next year, whatever, what do you think from a human resources point of view? Uh, are you, are you in good shape from a manning point of view or do you foresee requirement for more, more heads?
Depends on what happens with the truck. If we don't get a truck to haul trash, then currently as it sits, we're keeping our head above water and we're doing all right. The transfer station's fine. I mean, I'm short in there now, but one of my part timers had his kidney replaced. His daughter gave him his kidney. He's doing a lot better now, but he's not allowed to work in the transfer station for six months.
All right.
Because of the bacteria and stuff. But he's doing well, so he'll be back to help on Saturdays once, when, when, after the six months is up and he's two, three weeks out from surgery now and doing good.
So he's, he's the gentleman that had a kidney transplant.
Yeah, and then Larry has not been working because of COVID in his, in his, um, business. So he's been working in the afternoons and averaging like seventeen hours a week, working Saturdays and the two afternoon days. So I got three guys closing and some, there's times where Chip and Jeff will work twelves, twelve hour days, but it's not all the time and that's when they're covering for each other since I want a full timer there to open and close. I don't want the part timers to be doing that. So there's a full timer there in the morning and a full timer there at night. And obviously if one's on vacation, they just, they cover for each other that way.
Good. Steve, you mentioned the C I P, um, and this goes for the highway department too. Is there anything coming up this year, big?
I should. I got a pickup truck that I'm due to replace. Uh, i- in this fiscal year we're currently in now. Uh, I don't really want to trade it in because with all the mowing we got going on and the extra stuff that we have in the transfer station, the extra pickup truck would really come in handy with how multiple directions we go on a daily basis. Uh, the, there's a closed top dumpster that is being built as we speak. I should see it in the next two weeks that we bought a year ahead of time. Because the closed top dumpster that's in there now, um, was starting to expand and look like a, a balloon. It, it was, and, and you could see through it when you stood inside it, it was breaking. So we bought those. Uh, we bought that ahead of time and we actually got that for way less than was in the C I P for. There's, I think, a dump truck and an excavator that's supposed to be bought in twenty two, according to the C I P. Whether that happens or not remains to be seen. The transfer station doesn't have anything until I think twenty twenty five that's like, that's pressing now because we kind of bought stuff a little soon in the transfer station compared to the highway department.
Steve, can you speak to the group about the proposed gravel pit off Clay Lane? What's the status of all that? Bring people up to speed.
It's been an issue that's popped up.
Uh-oh.
With setbacks. So we might not be able to dig out as much as we once thought. We were given information that turned out to not be accurate and we acted on the incorrect information for a while.
So is it still not feasible or is it still feasible to do this or is it not feasible anymore?
Waiting to see what the property looks like after they put in three hundred foot setbacks.
Whoa, three hundred feet.
We thought it was gonna be fifty feet. We were told it was gonna be fifty feet. It's gonna be three hundred feet.
Because where all the good material, that's pretty close to all those boundaries there on the northern side of the parcel, so.
It's not just the northern side of the parcel.
But that's where all the good stuff I thought you said was.
Yes, but it's the entire parcel.
Yeah. Oh, it's the, yeah. Well, the stuff you said on this, the southern part was not that good as the stuff that was on the northern part, so.
Yeah.
Well, that's not good news.
So we thought, well, we, we thought we could go, go by the state rules, which the state rules state fifty feet.
Yeah.
The town rules state three hundred and it's written in the rules that we have to abide by the town rules even though we're the town, not the state rules. So we have to abide by the town rules that were put in place in nineteen ninety one.
So can we change the rule?
No. We're looking into it.
Is that, is that a zoning ordinance or something?
It's a regulation.
But it's something we put in place.
Correct.
All right.
We have full control of it, yes.
So if we wanted to switch it back, we could.
That is correct.
As long as the legislative body votes for it.
That's correct.
I blame Karen Rossi for this. What do you think?
I believe it's the planning board that works on the regulations.
Oh, well, I'd rather throw Karen Rossi underneath the bus than the planning board.
It's not Karen's fault.
I know, but I can throw underneath the bus, can I?
Can we change that? Would it be changed? Would the town change it for just itself or it would change it as a universal rule applying to everyone?
We haven't really gotten that far into what the plan is. And that'll be the purview of the planning board.
And it's a territory, please.
It just kind of came up at the very last second before our meeting the other night, so.
Just to clarify, is this the property over off of, um, Stepping Stone?
No.
Clay Lane. Where is Clay, oh, New Pl- yeah, New To- that's where I meant. Newtown Plains. Yeah, it's not property right there. Thank you.
Well, that's a boon for the butters, isn't it?
Wow. We'll have to see. Thank you for updating us, Steve.
So on the tra- on the solid waste budget, I just wanted to clarify the M S W line that we spent seventy nine thousand dollars on last year. But then if you look down, I only spent three thousand dollars in construction and demolition debris. That's because where we're sending everything to Waste Management now and I bill it myself instead of going through Lamprey like it used to be, instead of especially where it's harder to explain in person to Liz and Joanne because I have no, we can't physically s- talk to them in person. That a lot of that seventy nine thousand or at least five thousand dollars of that seventy nine thousand needs to go down in the construction and demo. Because we get the same bill for both. It's all on the same bill. So we just, I just pay it all out of it and I never moved it, had it move back down. So we really didn't overspend on that line item by that much at all this year. And we had a lot of extra trash come into the transfer station this year, a lot.
Steve, do we recoup our costs for what we charge the public for things like construction and demolition?
Yes.
Okay.
Same, we were, we actually make a little bit on the fluorocarbons line item, that fluorocarbon C F C line that I reduced by fifteen hundred bucks to a thousand is the air conditioners, refrigerators, stuff that has Freon in it. So we ha- uh, we have a few people that have gotten licensed to, to be able to remove Freon from the units, which wasn't the case when you saw the line item be overspent in nineteen. So they increased it in twenty to the thirty five hundred. I only spent the one sixty four because we started removing the Freon ourself again. And we put it into like, they look like propane bottles, propane tanks. We pump it out of the, out of the air conditioners and fridges into propane tanks. Normally, I can actually sell it through the N R R A and make a little bit of money on it. The problem is, is if somebody recharged their own air conditioner and put the wrong type of Freon in their air conditioner and I go by the label and I put the wrong Freon in a bottle, it's now contaminated and I get, and then I have to pay a lot of money to get rid of it. I've just been taking it over to F W Web and I can just do a straight up cylinder exchange for thirty bucks. So I just bring them a cylinder, pay them thirty bucks for a handling fee. I get an empty one and they walk off with the Freon. And I don't have to worry about it's contaminated anymore. Um, the electronics line I reduced because the cost for electronics has actually gone down a little bit. We haven't come close in the last two years to getting to the eight thousand to, for electronics. Glass is not increased on this line. We're gonna have to increase it by four hundred dollars because I got an email that I forwarded to Mr. Buggby. Was it two or three weeks ago, Scott?
Yeah.
That as of January first of this year, the price to get rid of glass is going from thirty five to forty dollars a ton. So they're increasing it by five bucks. The reason we didn't overspend that line item this year and we were at the twenty seven hundred which we would have overspent it this year because once COVID hit, we got a lot of glass in. But if you go into the transfer station, the new shipping containers we bought that we finally got set, that whole area, instead of paying to get rid of the glass, we just used as fill the glass we had and we were able to sink forty tons of P G A into that area and then ca- cap it with gravel to put the storage containers on top of. So that saved us sixteen hundred dollars about in, um, glass costs, putting it there.
Steve, have you, uh, you've talked about a few numbers that you need tweaking at. Have you sent these to Julie so she can update the system?
Not yet. I wanted to talk about them the night before to see what you guys said. I told her about them today so she wasn't blindsided by my comments tonight.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Steve, uh, I'd like to bring up a subject, I, I think it's kind of come and gone, uh, goes back and forth. You have received, uh, over, let's say the past X months, people dumping medical waste into the, into the system. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. We've had our fair share of medical waste recently dumped into the system, yes.
Is there, is there anything we need to do to, uh, tighten up? Uh, I'm very concerned about medical waste just getting dumped into our dumped into our, uh, solid waste or wherever it's going and
Well, some of it can, some of it can get dumped in. Like if you're on at home dialysis, that all can go in. Uh, we take people's, um, diabetic lancets all the time because that can go in, but that's given to us in a non puncture, a puncture proof jug and it's labeled medical sharps handled with care. It's not just in a trash bag. The worst one we had was right when dentist office opened back up, we ended up with like sixteen bags of dental office waste dumped over the wall all at once. And when they grabbed it with the skid steer to put it in the compactor, broke, they broke open and spilled all over the floor. And then they were down there trying to get it cleaned up with bloody gauze and all that stuff all over it, trying to get it cleaned up off the floor. And we were able to, I, we found out who did it by looking at the camera and talked to him, but that's not the first time he's done it. He says it's, he's not doing it again anymore, but it's been happening a lot. My guess is it happens more than we know, especially if they put them in black trash bags and as long as they don't break open, we don't see it. But all it's gonna take one of these days is one of them guys to grab a bag that's got stuff like that in it and them to brush it against their leg the wrong way and they get punctured and then we're in trouble.
I'm just wondering if, if we shouldn't, uh, have some, generally speaking, as I remember, medical waste is put in a red bag and identified as medical waste. If we shouldn't put a couple of separate containers out there specifically for medical waste and try and enforce people to, to use that.
I'm not allowed to take stuff like that anyway, especially the dental office stuff. They have contracts to get rid of that. We're not licensed to take medical waste from doctors' offices. I had to report that to D E S that it happened, so we covered ourselves.
Okay, all right.
It is. I mean, we got it out of the, we, I, I notified them. There's nothing we can do about it. But Turnkey doesn't like seeing that either. It's like when I first got there, they never, they used to just take whole, they used to take whole fifty five gallon drums of the needles we received from residents and throw them in all at once. Turnkey called, yelled at us for it because they had a fifty five gallon drum trash bag, all in one spot full of needles. They want them scattered throughout the cans and put in as we get them, not all at once. Because if we keep them like that, we're now classified as a generator, which we're not licensed to be a generator either because of the volume that we did.
Yeah. All right, bud. All right. I'm glad the new video system you were able to utilize to find out who was doing that illegal dumping. So that was good.
Yeah.
I don't think I have any other questions.
No, I'm good.
Steve, one quick one. Is the, is the swap shop closed and just a non-issue for all the way around?
The swap shop's closed. I had people ask me all the time when I'm gonna open it and I tell them every time they ask, they need to ask the select board to open it because they voted to close it right when this all started. So it would be up to their purview whether they wanted to open it or not. But every time I tell the volunteers that if they want to open it to ask the board of selectmen, they don't ever follow through, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm personally not ready to open it yet.
Sorry.
No, I'm personally not ready to open it yet. I don't know about the other two Selectmen, but.
So, I was wondering, is there a possibility with precautions or not, like you'd still want to?
I don't know about the other two. I'm not ready. I don't think it's time yet, so.
I'm in agreement. It's not ready yet.
Those volunteers safe? Like, how are you going to do, yeah?
Yeah.
That's part of the issue.
Yeah.
There's no guarantee that they're going to be safe.
Right.
Plus, if you've been at the swap shop, it's a congregating place. I do not want to promote people congregating in one place in close proximity, even if they have masks and stuff on. It's just, it's just asking for trouble and I don't think we need that at the moment, so.
Yep. All right, is everybody else set? I guess we are good.
Thank you, Steve. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.